Study session in the city council, call the meeting to order and entertain a roll call, please.
Both for here.
Here I am.
I'm here.
Angus.
Present.
Myers.
Here.
Rothie.
Present.
Here.
Thank you very much, we'll raise for the pledge allegiance. You may. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone, item D is the approval of the agenda, entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
First by Bergen, second by Rothie, council discussion if any, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion carries. Welcome back, President.
You can do it.
Ertzman, thank you, thank you, thank you. Any opening comments you'd like to provide this evening?
Countdown is on.
Okay, alright.
They're all coming back, if you haven't seen them yet, they're on their way.
They are, they are, it's good stuff to see in the community, so, thank you. Section E is public comments for items not on the agenda, please leave your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer, all remarks shall be addressed to the councils as a whole and not to any individual member, any public comments this evening. No Pete, alright, we'll move forward to section F, the study session calendar, item one is the planning and zoning commission annual report to the city council.
Good evening. Alright, so, I'm Dave Larson, I'm the current chairperson for the planning and zoning commission for the city of Waverly here, hopefully you've had a chance to review some slides we put together here, I've been chairperson since May of 2023, so, chairperson for a while, I was vice chair before, been on the commission probably another year plus that, so, a little bit of time on there, not as much as some, but enough to really give you guys a good overview of what we do. So, what I plan to do here this evening for you is kind of go over the introduction, what the commission is, kind of straight from the city's website, so, just kind of why we're here, what we do, how we serve the community and the city, briefly gonna go over our commissioners, who our team is, as we'll say, and how long they've been on, and then we'll talk a little bit about just the general update for you guys, you know, we plan this every year for this annual review, so we want to kind of cover everything that we've done in the past year, and I want to highlight a couple of things, and I put that in the spotlight section, just some significant things, one in particular being the comp plan that we'll talk about as we get to that, and of course have time for questions, comments, that sort of thing as we go. So, just kind of starting here, generally, you know, the planning and zoning commission serves in an advisory capacity, right, so we provide a recommendation to you, the city council, for final approval and final decision, we really review major things with the zoning, redevelopment, and again, bring those to you guys for action, and that's probably the bulk of what we do, and then additionally, we also do recommendations for the board of adjustments, so not only do we send things to you guys, but we give recommendations to the board of adjustments in the form of special provisional use requirements. So who are we, who are the commissioners and kind of where we are, just a snapshot of where we fit within the city of Waverly here, myself, my term expires, and again, this is kind of when everybody gets done, you can see we're staggered, so now as people come in, come off as we go, so myself, John Meyer, Douglas Ben Scooter, who gave the annual update last year, David Huser, Kathy Olson, Catherine Payne, Stephanie Gardner, and of course our liaison, Tim, and then of course Paige, who we have no words to explain everything that she does for us as well, and that's kind of where we are spread out through the community with the stars there. Alright, so getting into the update here and just kind of a timeline, I took the approach here to kind of highlight a few things, so the last update that you guys had was in 2022 in September by Doug, kind of marching through on this, you know, some significant things happened around the February timeframe, and one of those which really impacted us, as you'll see on the next slide as we get to it, was an ordinance amendment to remove roof mounted solar panels from a special provisional use, so that just fell into the balance of a city code, so, the only one that falls under special provisional now, as I remember, would be the yard mounted ones, the roof mounted ones go into general city code, they're not a special provisional use, that was really taking up a lot of our agenda time with those, so we had several of those that came through usually every month, so, that was kind of a big shift for us, and that happened in February and then went on through approval through you guys. The other big event that I feel I wanted to highlight here was the comprehensive plan for the city, so that's kind of the 10-year plan that gets put together, in this case, and we'll talk about it a little bit more in the highlight section, that plan was done in partnership with MSA and of course city staff, so that happened through our commission in February and then moved on through you guys. And then here we are in August for this 2023 update. So, what you see here is just kind of my attempt to put together a chart of where we spend our time, right, so just at a glance you can kind of see what we spend most of our time doing, so this is the summary of the last 12 months, really, September to August here, where we've been, so overall, you know, that special provisional use bucket, those were the roof mounted solar systems, that sort of thing, so hovering around seven of those over the last year, we would see several of those, and that's really just dropped off, now that that falls under the normal city code and zoning sort of things, those have fallen off, I think that's a good step forward, I don't mean to say that in a bad way, but we do, we did spend quite a bit of time reviewing those and approving many of those to pass on to you guys. See, the highest one we had then is the platte surveys, so we see a lot of platte surveys, which is really probably the core of what we are able to review and where our expertise falls and where our advice comes in, so those are the things that do take up the bulk of our meetings and discussion as we go forward, and I think that's, that fits right within our wheelhouse. A couple of rezonings, we don't see a lot of those, and of course this can vary, this is just where we've been in the last 12 months as I said, so those rezonings, you know, sometimes are minor things and sometimes they do involve more, we've worked a lot with just kind of the city staff on some rezonings where it's like just cleanup of some of the stuff on the city map anyway. Other, oops, one more section, so a little bit just briefly in this other section, just to let you know what that is, so that's some city ordinance changes that came through, we did some just updates to some language of some subdivision stuff, and then really just the elections, so the other bucket is really just two or three things that make up those, but most of the stuff is stuff that gets sent right through to you guys. Alright, sorry, alright, spotlight, so I wanted to spend just a minute and dedicate a slide to this and really just thank the city staff and MSA and all of you guys too, I guess, for the efforts and the reviews that went into the comprehensive plan that we put out, or that was put out in partnership with MSA, as I said, we spent some extra time on this, we took a couple sessions ahead of our regular commission meetings and spent some time reviewing this, giving feedback to MSA, so, you know, I want to thank the commission purposely on that, for their time that they spent on that, and then again, just kind of give you guys awareness of what went into this, and of course some of the other commissions here with the city were involved in their sections as well, and highlight that everybody played a pretty big part there. So then with that, I'll go to the questions section and entertain any questions that you guys would have or comments.
I would like to make a very oversimplification here probably, but if you'll confirm for me kind of exactly how this stuff all rolls together, is planning and zoning, you guys determine what people can do with their property, and then we're looking at the economic development commission and economic cities economic development staff, helping people to develop that property, you don't have anything to do with actually assisting people in developing property, you're basically setting up the rules of what they have to do to be able to develop that property, is that fair?
It's fair, I think in my, I'll give a shot at this first, and I'm sure maybe Bill can jump in too, so what we do, we're simply an advisory committee, so our main task is to look at things specifically outside of city code, so if there's development within a parcel that meets city code on an existing parcel, it will never come across our desk for review, I guess, or our meetings for review. The things that do would be a zoning change, so that gives the public an opportunity to come in and speak before our commission and voice opposition or support for a zoning change, if it's a platte survey, which is kind of a new border or I guess, survey of a parcel that's coming in, and that'll come across, and again, we're looking at that for setbacks as a function of supporting the city staff, right, so, I would say we're the public's avenue to reject or support the city's decision or the city code's interpretation on those platte surveys. So as far as specifically assisting or denying or approving, again, just as the advisory, we just kind of have an open discussion, we have a forum for the public in advance of this, for them to either make a comment or discuss changes that would impact their neighborhood or the city as a whole, so.
So, so when, if I could go back to the platte survey just a little bit, when there is a proposed platte that's brought to your commission, that is basically someone who owns a piece of property that would like to do something with that property, develop it, break it up into different lots, build houses, build commercial things on it or whatever, so they have their design team, architect or whoever comes in with a platte that says, this is what we would like to do with this property, and then you look it over along with Paige and say, yeah, that fits within what we have, well Paige probably does this more, this fits within what we have in city code and what we have already zoned this for, so it's zoned for residential, obviously, and they want to do a commercial development, obviously that's probably going to require some other types of things of rezoning like that.
Yep.
So, so basically, you're getting this, Paige says everything looks okay on this, you vote on it and say, yeah, that's okay, we recommend the city council approve it, comes to us, we rubber stamp it after we talked ourselves to death on the particular property, and that's, if there is something that's a problem, like the setbacks are wrong or something like that, I mean, or, I'm trying to think of what would be an issue that you would have on a platte that would, that you would reject, the platte that was being suggested.
Yeah, with my time on the commission, we haven't rejected a platte survey, we've spent quite a bit of time discussing certain ones, the schools would probably be the example I'd bring, when the school brought their two plattes of survey for those two properties up, you know, we spent a lot of time discussing, probably at more detail than was really needed on some of those things because they fell more into the city's wheelhouse as far as ordinances and the rules that the city has, but in the end, a lot of good discussion on traffic flow, some of the, many of the same things that you guys discussed, but just kind of as an early discussion of some of those things, like how does this impact the community, where does future development happen around these areas, right, does this make sense, does this encourage development in those areas, and then how does that overlap with, you know, again, the zoning map that the city currently has, the future, which is part of the comprehensive plan, we have kind of the future zoning map and where things will be kind of as the city does develop in that 10-year snapshot. You know, I think when it comes to plattes of survey, they are fairly black and white because there's a lot that's vetted through the survey company and the city before we see it, some of the areas where, and we did have a subject that was a special provisional use that we did vote to not move forward with, to the board of adjustment, comes with a lot more discussion sometimes, the special provisional use, in this particular case, it was a building on an existing property which was not zoned for that, so then they fall into the special provisional use discussion, there was public feedback on that, both for and against, and really, our task in that case for a special provisional use of an existing parcel was, you know, how does that impact, how does that fit with the neighborhood, how does it really either enhance or detract from what that is used for, so, it's not, it's not always a yes from the commission, I think when a group or a platte survey is put forth and everything meets the requirements, it's a fairly easy discussion for our commission.
And forgive me, I don't want to belabor the fact on here, but I kind of find the process intriguing and I've never totally understood it, so, at what point does the board of adjustment come in on this, if you have, if somebody has proposed a use for a particular piece of property and you have voted not to, I'm not sure what the terminology would be, but not to approve that use, can they then appeal that to the board of adjustment? Or does that come to the council first, I'm not sure where the board of adjustment comes in, because the board of adjustment is if somebody wants to make a, do something that is not currently permitted by the code, and the board of adjustment has the power to say, yes, we're going to allow that, or no, we're not.
Right.
And I'm not, at what point does that come back to the council then? I may be asking you a question.
That's a great question that I don't know.
It actually comes after the board of adjustment votes on it, it's, usually the appeals to the board of adjustment are for variances with setbacks or height of structures or size of structures, which all fit within what the zone, zoning rules say, in a residential zone, you have to be this far back from the property line, or you can only have this many accessory structures, or it can only be this size, and so, if somebody wants to build on that property, a extra garage, I'll move off of it, they would go to planning and zoning to say, here's what I want to build, this is how it fits with it, does it fit within the rules of the zoning, no, it's a little too close to line here and here, but it does fit with what the rest of the neighborhood looks like, so the planning and zoning would look at that and try to decide, does this really kind of fit together, that would then have to still go to the board of adjustment to them then approve that. If they turn that down, it comes to us, they can appeal it to us and we can then send it back to the board of adjustments to look at it again.
Reconsideration.
But we don't just overrule the board of adjustment, we send it back to them, if board of adjustment approves it, it comes to us and we can still say, no, we still, as a council, don't like it, but usually that weight from the board of adjustment comes to the council as a pretty strong recommendation.
And that's just looking at an exception to the current zoning laws, if somebody said, well, I know this is zoned for residential use, but I want to use it for commercial use, that would not actually be something that would go to the board of adjustment, that's something that would have to be either recommended or not recommended to the council by P and Z, and then we would vote whether to accept their recommendation or overturn the recommendation.
Right, because what the zoning commission does is with the plan, is they've kind of tried to lay out these layers of zones, so we have transitions between single-family homes, multifamily residential, commercial, industrial, so they're not, we're not having a factory right next to a school, right next to a daycare, kind of a, we don't want that mishmash type of, we have a nice transition, so there are areas of town where there's single-family residential and there's commercial, and there's not much space between them, and somebody wants to put something in there, what's going to go in there, and so that's where the zoning kind of comes in with the recommendation of this fits what, making that a good transition, and this doesn't really fit before we see as a good transition.
Okay.
Yeah.
You guys don't have an easy job either, appreciate all the time and effort, when I read through your minutes of your meetings, I'm amazed.
They can have some long ones.
How seriously everybody takes the responsibility, so I was for one really appreciate that, makes our life a lot easier.
Yeah, I would second that, as far as, you know, the members that we have and the experiences that they've had and the involvement in the community that they have really adds to the commission and their ability to kind of listen, interpret and advise, you know, each of us as we make our own decisions as we go forward, so, thanks for noticing.
Yeah, I was going to thank you too, I find the notes, the minutes of the meetings really helpful, especially with trickier situations, my question is with regard to future expansion, especially around the two elementary schools, and what are your thoughts about that, and what kind of communication does your commission have with the county planning and zoning commission, if any, I'm thinking about the pipeline that's proposed north of town, and what do you see as maybe ways to foster improved communication and working together as Waverly expands?
Yeah, that's a great question, so, what I would say during the review of the comp plan, there are some purposeful overlap with the county, the two mile agreement that we have with the county basically, and then how things overlap in regards to kind of interdepartmental sort of things, you know, so, a lot of this falls direct onto the city more than the commission, but I think we're aware of that interaction and we're able to ask those questions, you know, to city staff in our own meetings, I wouldn't say it's a, you know, a check and a balance, but it is in a way a discussion that we have to balance the community's interests or even the commission's experiences against the city desire to do certain develops in certain areas. So an opportunity, and one of our commission members brought this up, as we were putting together this update, I had shared with them and we kind of started to discuss this thing, and I think an action item that we're going to take away that I'll mention is this type of study session format, it worked really good when we were doing our work on the comprehensive plan update, but it's something I think that I'm going to propose that we do occasionally as well as, is do a special session, talk about things in the community that just aren't on our agendas, right, those being good examples, you know, in regards to the pipeline, for example, we haven't really, it hasn't been on our agendas, it hasn't came up as a discussion for us, during some of the comp plan stuff, we talked about road development to our south, you know, along 218 where that's getting redeveloped, so those things do kind of overlap, some of the DOT discussions, I think the development around the schools, if you look at our future land use map, there are some proposed roadways in that area to kind of support future travel, you know, where we have the platte survey for the schools, you know, there are some roads that cover the parcel for that future state, you know, so that infrastructure planning and development is in place, and we review that, discuss that, and bring that up, so it's, it's something that we're very cognizant of as we go through our discussions, but I think there is an opportunity, like I said, for some study session work, if I can steal that, as a way to bring those topics up that don't come across our agenda every month.
Thanks.
You bet.
Anything further?
I would just echo what's already been said, I really appreciate the notes that we get, they really help explain to us why the commission has made the recommendations they've had, so that it's easier for us to feel like we're making an educated decision when we have to vote on something, I appreciate that.
Great, that's our way to serve, so if there are no more questions, I guess, yeah, thanks for your commitment and your support, I look forward to serving the community as you guys do and as we go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you as well Paige, and everyone else from the commission that joined us this evening. Moving into item number two, discussion regarding traffic cameras and including study results.
Yes, sir, it's no secret, we've talked about traffic cameras for off and on the last couple of years, we've debated about something we should get into or not, and part of the problem that, you know, the chief and I have talked about is, is how much of an issue is there, we really don't know, is there as much of an issue as the public talks about or complains about, or everybody can talk about situations they've seen, or red lights have been ran, I mean, you go on and on and on. So we met the company called Genoptik, who is kind of the company on some of this, and they agreed to do a study for us, to place cameras at certain intersections up and down our main corridors, to truly try and figure out what are we looking at, how bad is the situation, and I guess that brief intro, I'll kind of turn it over to chief, kind of walk you through what we have, what we found, kind of what you're looking at, so you make sure there's a good understanding of what you're seeing.
Well, thank you, I'm excited to be here.
I am too.
So as James mentioned, we have been talking about, I believe that James kind of let the cat out of the bag a little bit during budget, threw it out there to kind of little feeler, and so what we've been doing since then is kind of working through the process of what, if it was something that we were going to do here in Waverly, what should be our guidelines, our principles of determine whether or not we should have it, and then if we do, the placement of those, because I think it's important that if we go down this path, it needs to be very transparent in a program, and it needs to have a lot of communication with the public, so there's not any misunderstanding of what the sole purpose of an AT system would be for the citizen of Waverly, and I think it may be helpful to know that James and I are hesitant in our approach to this, we, we want to make sure that it's, that it would deliver what we're looking for in Waverly without adversely affecting the citizens of Waverly as well, and so we are pretty conservative in our approach on this topic. So, I know in front of you, you have a study session, agenda item that I brought forward, you have not had any time to look at it, and so I'm just going to kind of walk through, and let's say this is our initial introduction to automated traffic enforcement, the ATs, and why we think maybe it's important to have here in Waverly, and I have Phil Sargent from Genoptik and also retired from Muscatine Police Department that can talk about their implementation of the program and then what they've seen and what he's seen across the state, how effective they may be, and then I'll do a little closing with that and obviously give questions, or answer questions. So, you know, automatic traffic enforcement is the use of cameras and vehicle sensors to capture images for anybody speeding and running lights, these images which include license plate numbers are captured, and then they're forwarded to the police department to make a determination, and we get to review those, so it's not a third-party entity that would issue and approve any type of civil infraction, it would be first approved by a police officer sworn that would say yes, and confirm the information, confirm the video footage to any type of violation, and then that would be sent out to, unlike a, unlike a traffic citation, this is a civil, very similar to parking tickets, it would be sent to the registered owner and not necessarily the operator of the vehicle because it is civil infraction. So why ATs in Waverly? The police department is committed to the safety of our residents and visitors, including the motoring public, traffic-related complaints are one of the most highest frequently heard complaints from citizens, the relationship of speed and violation of traffic signals risk signals to risk the accident and fatal, I'm sorry, are your lights on here? I can't see this, I must be getting old, I got to hold it out. That's bad, thank you.
Hey, love to be live.
Alright, so anyway, the relationship between traffic signal violations and speed and the amount of damage is pretty well established, and the intent of ATs is to reduce accidents And the intent of ATEs is to reduce accidents and seek voluntary compliance. So obviously our hope would be that there'd be signage, you'd see the equipment and we'd have voluntary compliance with that. And I think many chiefs across the state have stated, if there were zero violations, then it's become effective. That would be the purpose of an ATE. Traffic cameras obviously monitor the roadway more efficiently and effectively than humans. ATEs allow police officers to respond to other calls for service and public safety concerns. It reduces the number and the need for officers to make traffic stops in dangerous areas. And if you look at where we've done a lot of these studies along Bremer Avenue and Spore Street, it is particularly hard for traffic, traffic stops to occur. And sometimes you wonder when it's really busy and officer has to decide, do I make a stop on this vehicle? Am I going to cause more concern, more issues by shutting down one lane than if I was to let that speeder go? And then you just don't know what's going to happen down the road. And so it's difficult to make those stops in those congested areas. And also they're used in areas where if there is an accident, you can see where it's difficult for fire police and EMS to respond to those accidents in those really congested areas. So the attempt or the idea is to have ATEs in there so that you reduce the number of accidents that gets emergency personnel out there less frequent of the time. Utilizing ATEs provide the opportunity to modify driving behavior on a high volume and high risk roadways and they're safer than traditional traffic stops. And then another benefit that many times we don't think about is ATEs provide consistent enforcement. And it removes some of the discretion from officers and is an opportunity to reduce the perception of any type of discrimination that could occur during traffic stop by law enforcement officers. So those are the reasons why we thought, would they work and should they, should we look at them here in Waverly? And so we got to look at, okay, those are the advantages, but is there a need in Waverly? And so we start looking at traffic counts and we start looking at accidents, we start looking at speed. And the primary purpose of law enforcement is enforcing traffic laws to reduce accidents and to make the roadway safer. And the public safety benefit of AT systems have been demonstrated by jurisdictions and across, in Iowa and across the country. And the systems are efficient ways to enforce traffic laws and correct reckless behavior. It's not surprising that most accidents happen most frequent in those difficult areas and traffic are in the traffic signal areas. So if you look at Waverly's traffic count, the highest counts for Waverly is along Spore Street, anywhere between 10th Avenue Southwest and 29th Avenue Southwest. Think of Casey's down to where Taco Bell will be going. That is the highest number of, we have for traffic counts. The second highest is at, is at West Bremer and Spore Street. And that is the highest volume of traffic on Bremer Avenue is at that area. So Spore Street and East Bremer are your primary areas that we have a lot of, lot of vehicles. And according to the Iowa DOT crash data from 2018 to 23, we had 642 reportable accidents. Little difference between reportable and all accidents is that the DOT accepts anything that is reportable. That means if there's a personal injury or if there's damage of $1,500 or more. So if it's below that, Waverly Police Department would do a report, but we would keep that in-house. So we can do more of an in-depth look, but what was sent to the state falls in that category of reportable and there were 642 of those during that timeframe. Of those, 642 accidents, that means there was 1,157 vehicles and 1,473 people that were involved in those accidents. And the total property damage was 3.6 million. Of those accidents, 24% of those had injuries related to those accidents. So if we can reduce that, the number of accidents, we can hopefully reduce the number of injuries that are involved in these. Of those 642, 132 of those were broadside, where somebody's front end is sitting on somebody's side. And the red light camera violations is directly related. That's the impact that we're trying to get rid of. The highest is the rear end collision. But actually what we're trying to do is shift the broadside to a rear end collision if there is going to be any at all, because the broadside is where you're going to have more of your injuries. And I have a couple of photos here of that is, that depicts where the accidents from 2018 to 2023 happened along Spore Street and 10th Avenue. And you can see the cluster along there. Also at Spore Street and 29th Avenue is the image on your right. And you can see the clusters along 29th and then down by Quick Star. And then the next page has the cluster around Bremer and Spore Street there. The, and so the traffic count makes sense. If you look at the thermal imaging below that, it shows you where the primary routes of traffic are and where everybody knows everything defined in the red. So we decided to do a speed traffic study as well. We have a lot of people that complain about speeding. We complain about it, we observe it. And, but is it a problem? Is it, how bad of a problem is it? And what we're seeing at certain spots, is that what, is that consistently throughout the city? Is it located in certain areas? You happen to be there when something bad happens and so now it's always happening there? It's, somebody's always speeding, there's, you know, you always hear those always. So we just wanted to confirm it. And I think the results were interesting. We used, with the assistance of Genoptik, Phil went around and placed a speed radar at certain locations and they were chosen based on the highest number of crashes, the highest observed speeds by officers, and then also citizens' complaints. And you'll see there's two in there that have really low numbers. And so I think that should help alleviate any concerns that this was not intended to find in as many locations to place cameras as we wanted. We want to confirm that there's a problem. And there were surprises on both ends. I was surprised at the numbers of speeders in certain areas and I was surprised at the lack of speeding in other areas. And so we'll walk through that real quick. If you look, we did it, I put the information here in order of how they were placed. And so from June 7th to June 13th, it was located at Spore Street and 10th Avenue Southwest. Actually, it would be 500 feet south of that, near the McDonald's intersection there just because there wasn't a grid mounting place there. So in that week's time, there was 84,743 vehicles that went through that corridor. The highest speed was 60 miles an hour. The speed limit there is 40. This is one of my surprises, there's only 26 vehicles that were 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. It's where you typically start seeing enforcement with cameras. Now, mind you, law enforcement can be less than that. So don't think you can drive eight, nine miles an hour and not get pulled over because it certainly could happen, so.
Yeah. This is if you set all the cameras at 10 over.
Yeah, right.
So that's what you're seeing. You're not seeing seven or eight or nine. This is at 10 and 10 plus.
Yeah.
I bet it was 24 hours a day.
Yes, yep.
Counts, okay.
Yes. And then our next spot was down by Quick Star South and speed limit there is 45 miles an hour. And our top speed was 72. And there was 418 vehicles in that amount of time. There were 61,358 vehicles that passed through that location, 418 of them were going 10 miles an hour or more. I felt that was going to be about where that number should be. I was expecting that. The next one is one that shocked me was at 29th Avenue Southwest, right where they're building Taco Bell. There was 64,372 vehicles, 2,035 were going 10 miles an hour or more. Yes.
Is there clarification if they're going southbound or northbound?
I don't have that, no.
And is there an analysis of how, so I'm thinking if I'm coming northbound and coming off the highway?
Yes.
And so is there, I guess, is there designated or research, I'm just talking to the scientists now, evidence-based analysis of how many, how much roadway needs to exist in order for a vehicle to slow their speed in time to go through that light? Because I think there's what I call a trap in Waterloo, same idea, you're coming off the highway and they just trap you because the speed limit changes so rapidly.
Yeah.
And so my question is, is there an evidence-based approach to how much roadway should actually exist?
Yeah.
And I would want to know how many of these cars are going northbound versus southbound, coming out of town versus coming off the highway?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. And I don't know if you're down and can separate the two. Phil?
Good evening. My name is Phil Sargent. Like the chief mentioned, I work for Genoptik now, but I worked 32 years at the Muscatine Police Department. And I retired as the assistant chief. I started the speed and red light program in Muscatine. I administered it for 12 years. And when I retired, another company asked me to come work for them and following that, I took employment with Genoptik. Answering your question, the data that I sent over, if you data mine it, you know someone that's good with Excel? I was a cop. I was good with technology, but Excel wasn't one of those I'm really good with. I sent the whole raw data and you should be able to take that and it should say which direction should be one or two. And that'll be either coming or going. So then you'd be able to see what the speed are for each direction. To answer your question though, and stay advised, the speed limit starts at that sign. So people have to be going 45 miles per hour when they hit that sign. They have to be going, they can go 55 miles an hour when they hit that sign. To determine how long it takes a vehicle to stop, then you're going to have to talk to an engineer because you've got analog brakes, you've got the roadway conditions, you've got whether they're following the speed limit. There's a lot of variables too that, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know. But I used to do crash reconstruction and I do know that the analog brakes make it so much quicker and easier to slow down than, I'm dating myself, but the days before the analog brakes, when you hit the brakes and you skid and stuff. I don't know that.
I think when you do research study, you talk about intervening variables. And I would think a definite intervening variable if you're going northbound is coming off the highway, especially if you're not familiar with Waverly.
Yep.
You know, these vehicles are from, you know, our town, city, excuse me, that you would, you know, ask the question of if people aren't familiar with the amount of time they need to stop in order to get, even if they're going through, especially if they're going through green light, right? Because you're not even thinking about slowing down to meet that speed limit. But I think it'd probably be very interesting to assess those intervening variables to determine, is there actually a speeding problem or is it more of a engineering problem?
No, and that would be, so this is step one for anything, and we'll get this a little bit later, but anything that we decide to do, because it appears that our, our, our most areas that we're in, I'm most concerned about is along Spore Street and Bremer Avenue, which is Highway 3 and 218. And so we have a requirement to go through the DOT. And the very first thing that they'll do is determine if our roadway is established properly, if it's set up properly, if it's signed properly, if we have enough that distance and then we're compliant with the federal standards for, for all those things. And that'll, so that would be the very first step. And I do agree that one of the reasons why I think that number is high is that that 45 is not that far or not that far away from that intersection. But you do have to look at.
But they're going 10 miles over the speed limit though. They're going 55.
When you exit the highway, if you think about this, you exit the highway, it immediately turns to 55. So from 55 to 29th Avenue is 55 and you still have 1,100 vehicles at 55 or more going through that intersection. So I would, I would argue that there's going to be plenty of time between the interstate and 29th Avenue that you, 1,100 vehicles could have slowed down for that. So, but no, that's again, but that's all will be part of the process. Yep.
And then you look at the data, you know, the next light, the next intersection down is at Quick Star South. And you would hope that most of those people who were maybe going 55 miles an hour through the light, the first stop, or first stoplight will have slowed down to close to 45 by the time they get to the Quick Star light.
Yep.
But, and I haven't looked at this data that carefully. I would assume that a lot of the people have slowed down and are using kind of that as their slowdown path between the first light and the second light.
Well, you're going from 2,000 that are 55 and above to 400 that are 55 and above. And approximately 95% of those cars go through both intersections.
Yeah, the number's about the same, about 64,001 and 61,000 on the other.
Right.
So that tells me that a lot of people are not slowing down.
They're not slowing down at 29th, probably because, I mean, at the moment, 29th doesn't seem like a busy intersection.
Yeah.
I mean, once we've got Taco Bell and other things on that intersection, it will encourage people to slow down because there's going to be more congestion.
Right.
I think at the moment, people blow through there and they think, you know, there's nothing here yet, but by the time they get to Walmart and Quick Star, then they're slowing down.
Well, and anybody who's commuted to Waterloo in the morning knows that people rev up by Waverly Tire.
No.
And they just are trying to make that light by Walmart.
And they're trying to make both lights.
Yeah, yeah. So it's like the Indy 500 typically.
I think a lot of this, the natural speed enforcement, getting people to the speed limits as you come north into town is driven by the vehicles in front that are observing the speed limit that's forcing people behind them to slow down, or the traffic lights changing, or the traffic in front of them coming off of a stoplight that forces people to read down the road and slow down. But I do agree that there's, because I observe the speed limit through there and I'm getting passed all the time, but.
And I personally am loathe to break, I prefer to coast down to the speed limit because like, you know, I'm all about conserving energy and all that. So I hate breaking down to the speed limit, rather coast down.
Don't coast, don't take it out of gear. That's illegal.
Coast earlier.
Coast earlier.
Coast from Jamesville. It's a lot of uphill though.
Just blinding.
All right. Another one that surprised me, the next spot was at Bremer Avenue and Thirb Street. And there was 701, what's that?
Easter west.
On the west side, yeah.
West side.
By Fairway.
Yeah. At that, at the intersection, Third Street, the, it was sitting right where it's on Walgreens property, but right next to the roadway there. And there was 701 that were 10 miles an hour with the speed limit. That one was surprising me too.
The highest speed was 57 through that area. So you can imagine going 57 by Fairway. That had to be like at three o'clock in the morning. I hope so. I hope so too.
It might have been us too.
I was going to say, I was going to ask that later. I was going to ask that later, you know, is there the direction for?
Totally, totally got to make the light.
But along that corridor, at that time, for that week, there was 8,195 vehicles. And so again, you see the need for change, I guess is the best way to do it, along these two corridors, the amount of traffic and the amount of speeds that were seen. And then you look at Cedar River Parkway, right next to the soccer complex. And there was 22,000 vehicles and there was only six vehicles that went over. And that was one that surprised me on the low side, that there was only six. And that is probably one of the areas that we get the most complaints about, or we hear it a lot. And it's just, a lot has to do with because of what the activities that are, that take place out there is probably why people are really concerned about, and they should be. But that is telling us that in that amount of time is probably one of our least areas of concern for speed.
This might be slightly off topic, but it's never stopped me before. The corner, the light at Bremer Avenue and Fourth Street there by the Walgreens, okay, that is 25 miles an hour we had, the camera was set up. My concern has been, I voiced this a couple of times, not terribly vociferously, but two adjectives in a row. It goes at 25 mile an hour as a speed limit, only half a block to the west of that intersection. And I'm wondering, what I've seen is a lot of people are trying to hit that light and they're blowing through the light, they're going 35 miles an hour down Bremer Avenue, legal speed limit, and they're half a block away from the intersection, still going close to 35 miles an hour. They see the light's green and they try to zip through the light before it changes. Maybe one alternative would be to move that speed limit back a block or two further to the west so that there's more of a time period for people. or two further to the west so that there's more of a time period for people to slow down at 25 miles an hour before they get to that intersection.
Okay.
Just, yeah.
Suggestion.
I kind of always looked at it as both calling east and west Bremer. It seems like you have a speed trap there that, up on the hill, you're at 35, you come down the hill, it drops to 25. So cars coming down the hill, gravity accelerating, they have to be braking because the speed limit's dropping on them as they get to the bottom, whether you get by the courthouse.
Coasting to sit gas.
Yeah.
But everybody knows who lives here, it goes to 25 right there. And, and I mean, the other, the other...
That knows who lives here, it's Ohio State Highway.
Yeah, no, I'm here, yeah. I get you. But the other thing I think is pedestrians. That, that corner by Walgreens is terrible.
Oh, yeah.
You see people waiting, 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 they, they're waiting for a chance to, to get across the street. And I think if you're, if somebody's doing 40 through there, you know, and there's a hesitant pedestrian or a group of pedestrians, that's another issue. And I think the other place is if you're trying to pull out from a business, whether it's the veterinarian clinic or rolling or wherever, back on and making a left turn, you can tell when the cars are going the speed limit and when they're going 60, you know, about whether you've got time to pull out. So I think that's the other issue with the speeders that is a safety issue.
It might be where some of the, the T-bone collisions are going, people pulling out onto Fourth Street and...
And you're not anticipating somebody going that way.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. That was also an area that Captain Eggleston, before he left, he, he pulled and looked at the data. And, you know, we're showing what was going at 35 miles an hour or more at 701. He looked at if they were at that seven miles an hour or eight, which is more your traditional, that's where you're, you should probably put a cap on it. There was over 20,000 vehicles that were, you know, that seven or eight over along that corridor. So...
Let's in a week, take that by 52, that's a big number. So the speed is not just 10 over like we're talking, it's, oh, it's 700. Seven or eight is 20,000 people speeding through that intersection.
Based on...
This is a week.
I just punched the numbers very quickly and based on this, if you perceive that these are seven-day captures, based on 10 miles an hour and over across all of these, and of course, not doing enforcement at all, those are proposing that, but that's over 165,000 that are 10 over the speed limit. And that's not even talking about red light violations in one year. So.
So that's some of the things that started to really pique our interest, is what are we really dealing with here? And so you start to extrapolate what you want out of the data. We just come across, we think there's a problem.
I think it's important, I was going to say this for a little bit later, but the data that's being presented is data of behavior produced by the operators. So how you want to interpret it as far as being a need for change, that raises the question in the future, is this it? So.
And again, your guys' question about where the signage at, where our speed zones are at, that's, should be all part of our, the foundation before we make any other changes, is to ensure that all those things are exactly compliant. Because the DOT will look at that as well.
I think, I know it'll leave surprise when I say this, but, you know, when the students come back, it increases the population of Waverly by over 10%. And this was done in the summer.
Yes.
And so my other fear about this is maybe the timing of the study. I think it might be in everybody's best interest to do this again when our young humans, who we know, their frontal lobes are still developing. And it might be interesting or helpful for the city of Waverly to be thinking about the impact of the college students coming back to town and how that impacts speeding in different ways.
Well, and the high school students.
High school students.
I think in that same vein, Dr. Eas, the, and I totally agree with that, but it also, you have a 10% population increase that's not aware of our, sort of doing it, might inflate these numbers to where we think we have something more of a problem. And it is a problem when, so, yeah. So.
And then the last area for the speed study we did was 1,200 block at 10th Avenue Southwest. Think about where Palestrini and Berkshire is at, that's kind of where that was located at. And there was a little bit higher than what we saw on the east side, Cedar River Parkway, and it was 122 vehicles that were 10 miles an hour or more.
Now that's...
Yeah, and so...
Difference there is four.
That's one of those areas that I argued with an engineer about the whole idea of moving it to a nicer road, a four lane. I said, well, it's going to be a racetrack there. When I was working, because when I was working the road, it was seal-coated road, two lane, and we were catching 60s through there all the time. And I thought, when we made it to what we had, we're going to, it's going to be a problem. And it didn't. It, it, it's what you're getting out on Cedar River Parkway, there is a, if the roadway is built properly, there is a calmness there and you've, and you're feeling that you're going too fast. If you start getting up around that 45, and that's what happened along 10th Avenue, it was a better road, a bigger road, and we heard speeds reduced. So that's why it's important to look at the engineering prior to using ATEs as a countermeasure. You have to ensure that everything's set up properly before you use this and augment what you currently have.
Is there any evidence of the effectiveness of the berm歇 signs along there?
I don't think I was part of the study.
No.
All right. So then, this was really hard to do, finding time to get out and look and just do a field observations of red light violations. Actually sit there, so we had somebody at one-hour increments to sit along these intersections and just observe. And unfortunately, weren't able to do it very often because an hour's actually a long time and not having to respond to other calls. So I'll let you guys look at that. We did it at Fourth, Fourth Street and West Bremer. We did it at 10th Avenue on Fourth Street. We did it at Quick Star on Fourth Street, and we did it at 29th and Fourth Street. And you can see that the highest occurrence rate, if you will, by average, was at 10th Avenue and at Bremer. And the lowest was 10th, 20th Avenue. And, which we had the highest number of violations for speed. But a lot has to do with opportunity because the cross-traffic isn't there as much to trip those lights. So it's wherever you have more of the cross-traffic, that's going to flip those lights that create more changes, that you're going to get more of those violations.
I would also say on 29th, we were coming off the freeway, there's an indicator, there's a flasher when the light's about to change. So you're less likely to run the red light if you can know it's going to change soon.
But that is one also, 20th Avenue, that I was told every single time they go through that intersection, there's a violation. I'm like, oh, these numbers will be high. And so again, it's, it's, a lot of it's perception. You, maybe you did see a violation every time you've been through, but it doesn't mean that it's happening every single time. And, and so that's why these studies, I think, are important. I wouldn't call these observations a study, but, you know, we can obviously get more technical with that.
Just a real quick question.
Yeah.
A definition of red light violation would be somebody, the light is red and they drive through the intersection?
Yes.
Or if the light is red and they don't stop, but they just, they, they make a right-hand turn?
Yeah. So what we tried to do, what we did, we didn't try to do, we did, what these were determined is if they would be in violation of an ATE system. And so what that means is that these were true red light violations.
Okay.
And Phil can talk about the technology when he gets up a little bit, but there is, will be a sensor, and when that flips to red, there is a line on the road. And that vehicle has to be in front of that when it flips. And if it proceeds past that after the red light happens, then that would be a violation through the system. So if it flips, I'm saying this right, if it flips while a car is halfway through it, wouldn't count, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So a lot of people say, oh, I couldn't slow down. It is going to be a true violation. That light is red and then you've entered that intersection. It's not, you look out and I think we've all, I've done it. I've looked up and like, eh, well, that was orange. So you would not be in violation. So I took, we took the numbers off of what would be a violation. And there were some times, Bremer Avenue being one of them, and I, actually, this is where I saw it the most. If you're west, I'm sorry, eastbound and you want to turn right, you're not stopping, there's a red light and it's clear and they're rolling through...
California.
Rolling through the, to go south on Fourth Street. That happens quite a bit. That's where probably a lot of those violations were, was the rolling through.
I was wondering how many were the turning, coming west and turning south on Fourth and not the second car in line, but the third and the fourth car that's still...
So what side though?
Yeah. Sneak in.
Yeah.
So in that case, we all know that everybody is trying to turn left, so they get in, they control the intersection, lights turn red, and they make that left-hand turn, would not, even though by state statute, you're in violation because you shouldn't have been out there, but, you know, that's one of those wives' tales. But if you're out there, it will not be a violation through the system.
But the two cars following it would be.
Two or three cars following would be, which is what happens.
Which happens quite often, yeah.
So what we did, we just kind of looked at it, and, and I just kind of provided examples of how we would go through the process of maybe making a determination of where these locations were, where we could look at locations. So I just rated, ranked them the speed and the red light, and the three that, locations that came up, the highest was along, was Bremer Avenue on Fourth Street there, 29th, and then 10th Avenue were kind of the highest. Now again, I'm not here to say this is where they should go, that's not part of the discussion tonight, but I just wanted to kind of give you an example of what we could, how we could set it up, you know, our guidelines of how we could make determinations where these could go if casual does decide that we want to move forward. Honestly, I can get into, I'll let you guys read the rest of it. There is a lot of information, there's data there that supports them. Are they controversial? Of course. There is no, nobody's, I don't think anybody enjoys seeing them. So I think we need to go into this, again, very transparent, very open. You know, I, I mentioned on the second page, or the next page, where the public surveys, you know, typically support red light cameras. And I think when we talked about the budget, that was one that came up right away was, yes, maybe red lights, but maybe not speed. And that was just off the cuff right away. But I think we can see that, you know, speed is an issue. And NHTSA shows in 2011 National Survey that 80% thought that automatic, automated speed cameras would be acceptable to enforce limits in school zones. 84% said in high-crash locations, and 70% said in hazardous areas, you know, where it's difficult to stop along Fourth. So there is some public support out there. Above that, I talked about countermeasures and that's what I think this is, is one tool in the toolbox. It's one countermeasure. And you can see what they felt, and that was also NHTSA, that ranked the countermeasures, and that's laws, which are speed limits, enforcement, which are his automated, automated enforcement, it means officers, the penalties, and then also communication outreach. And the highest is the speed limits. And it goes back to the engineering, setting the speed limits where they need to be, the signage that they need, and then hopefully then the voluntary compliance to those. And then in the enforcement side of it, you can see that the ATEs actually are more effective, according to NHTSA in the study, than high-visibility enforcement. And when you read that, the reason is, is because it's short-term effect. It's, there's a high, where it's at a five while the officer there, while he's actively enforcing it, but as soon as he gets pulled away and goes to another area of the town or is on a call of service, then that dips again. And that's why the AT, ATEs rate higher, is because they're always there.
Well, I think one of my, one of the concerns with the speed cameras is the speed trap notion.
Yeah.
That we're trying to fool people, we're not letting people know there's, that we're recording them, that we're looking at them.
Yeah.
So when we have these speed cameras and these traffic cameras, I think it's really important to have those signs saying, hey, dummy, we're, we're looking at you. I mean, we're not trying to do this where people don't know. We want everyone to know exactly where the speed cameras are so they can slow down for it.
Yeah.
I've driven through Cedar Rapids twice in the last week, and I've never looked at this before, but now I knew this was on the agenda. So the sign is right before the camera.
Yep.
And so you, you're warned, not right before, but you have a little time to slow down. And that's the only place the cameras are. And so it's pretty obvious...
Right.
Where they're looking at you.
Well, yeah, I mean, if they're, they're not trying to catch you, they're trying to get you to slow down.
Yeah.
The, a couple of the attachments that I have are the DOT's guidelines. And, and so that's one of them too, is that there is, there's been a lot of scrutiny, obviously, in the state of Iowa where these have been a lot of discussions. And so the DOT, and this is to help, you know, the, the concerns that are raised, is that it spells out the guidelines, and, and signage is one of those as well, that it has to be signed properly, it has to be advanced warning, and the locations have to be announced, whether it be on your website or, mainly the website. We have to give data to the DOT before and on occurrence afterwards. I don't remember if it's annually or quarterly, but we have to show how the results are happening. And so it's an ongoing justification that we have to produce the DOT. And that's mainly because it's on their roadways. And so then, the other page is a list of some cities and, actually, there's two counties also. So a quick look, I found 27 cities, 29 if you include the counties of places that have some form of ATEs in their jurisdiction. And my wife asked me, she goes, is it, that's for like big cities, isn't it? And I was like, well, not really. And so I thought, hey, that'd be one thing that you guys might ask, where do you see them? And this was not on purpose, but when, when I looked it up, we ended up falling right back in the middle of, of that. And I guess that that wasn't on purpose, that's how it turned out. So we would be very average. You have Chester at 130...
Which had to be like the first one in the state, weren't they? Close to it.
I don't know if they're the first one, but yeah.
No.
But you have Chester at 139 people, and then you have Des Moines at 214,000. So there is a range. And...
For those of you who don't know, Chester is right on the Iowa-Minnesota border.
It is.
Yeah.
Right on 63rd.
Chester where the, the speed, the, the tickets from the automated system make up about half of their city budget. They, they get a couple hundred thousand dollars a year from it.
Oh, I don't know.
Saw that in the news article a couple weeks ago somewhere in Iowa.
Take too many tickets with 132 people, so probably...
Well, they're all out-of-towners, so they're all people driving through Chester. Locals still have speed cameras there, so they...
Great thing.
So those are some of the jurisdictions that have those, and this is where I was going to introduce Phil, and just kind of talk about how they decided to implement it in Muscatine. And you can see that Muscatine is in our list. Where is the list?
Yeah. December 16.
Okay, yeah. So a little bit larger community than us and, and some results, and then also what he's kind of seen throughout the state with his work through Genopti.
So Chief, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So if you have an officer reviewing all this data, how much, how many hours a week do you think that would take for an officer?
We talked to the chief, Niedert in Independence, and it averages to be about an hour-ish. It doesn't take long, and you might be able to, that's part of your presentation typically, of how long the review process goes. And you, you've had 13 years of experience with it.
Question about review, when you first start off, it takes a little longer because you're learning the software, you're learning the system. In a very short time, you're able to look at, you're able to pick out the important parts. Does the vehicle match? Does the license plate match? Is the data there? If it is, great. Every system that I've worked with and in Muscatine, a citation doesn't go out until the police department or law enforcement agency approves it. In Chester, Iowa, the sheriff's department up there gets a portion of any revenue from those citations, because the sheriff's department is the one that is the law enforcement entity there. Same way in Hazelton. Buchanan County Sheriff's Office is the law enforcement entity that is representing Hazelton. In Muscatine, back in 2009, myself and another officer who was assistant chief at that time, we started looking at this because... time, we started looking at this because we had a number of areas where we had a lot of crashes, we had a lot of speeding, the officer could sit there all day, and they decided, we're not even going to write a 11, we're going to write a 15, because we can't keep up with it. One of those was a business district, or a growing business district, just like a 29th. We implemented, part of the program was that one was specifically for speed, and within two years, we saw a 50% reduction in citations at that one location. What we did is, we looked at where most crashes were, we talked to the police officers on the street, we looked at the data, we talked to some companies that do this, and back in 2009, there was less than there are now, but the process is the same. The agency has fine, the agency in the city has final decision on the ordinance, on the threshold for speed, on the locations for the cameras. Now, I will tell you that the company is going to look at, if you say you want one at this intersection, and there's a red light there, but they know that there's one person running a red light here, they're going to say, the return on investment isn't there, we're not going to be able to do that. So what happens is, the city would contract with the company. During the implementation process, which, I'm not a salesperson, I'm the implementation manager for the company, and I take new agencies, new clients, and I help them get their program up and running. I've also got computer experience, and I'm good at tinkering with things, so I've become a field engineer, and I've become the person that goes around putting up the speed data collection system. So the city would decide, first off, if you want to do this, that is your first decision to make, is if you think this is right for your community. If it is, then I would recommend that you start looking at ordinances, and you get examples from other cities, because they vary a little bit. But the consistency in the state of Iowa is, you've got a threshold of 10 or 11 miles per hour over the speed limit. There's administrative review that the city has that's outside of the court system, for anybody that wants to contest. They don't have to do that, but that's just another layer of due process on there, but everybody has the right to go to court if they would like. City, in Muscatine, we made a presentation to city council, similar to what the chief is here, but we had already kind of gotten a feeling for the, the temperature of the city for speed and red light cameras. We presented it, pros and cons. They said, yes, go ahead and do it. We selected a contractor, we worked with the city attorney to draft an ordinance, which has been revised over the years as certain factors have changed. And then we signed a contract with, with that contractor. During that time then, I worked with them very much in getting everything from construction schedules, to permitting, to where we wanted the signs. In Cedar Rapids, they have a sign at every intersection to the city that says traffic laws, photo enforcement. Waterloo has a lot of these similar signs, I can't guarantee that they have one at every entrance there. Muscatine has one at every entrance to the city. And then as you approach a red light or speed, and Muscatine has red light and speed at all of the intersections where it's at. And there's a speed limit sign before each intersection, and there's a sign that the DOT mandates that shows there's a traffic light. Underneath each one of those, you have photo enforcement. So at each one of these, you have two photo enforcement signs, not counting the ones at the, at the city limit. On University and Highway 61, there's five signs before you get to that one approach coming into town, into the business district. That's because there's a traffic sign and a speed limit sign on the medium, and one on the shoulder. Over the years, we modified the program a little bit, but the fines stayed pretty much the same. We did have to make some adjustments to a court decision called Sting versus Bem, no, Bem versus Cedar Rapids. And that's where the Iowa Supreme Court said, unlike the credit card company, you can't say that that debt is due without a judge saying that debt is due. So they had different steps to go with that. And there were some other smaller things, you know, like you can't have a late fee in the state of Iowa. How photo enforcement is run varies from state to state. There's a lot of states that actually have a state law, where it has fairly general, some are fairly general, some are fairly strict, guidelines for what it is. And you follow those guidelines when I'm helping an agency develop a program, or when the city is developing their program. There again, the decisions are up to the police department and the city. And when I, when I say the city, I'm, most of the time I talk about the police department, because after the contract is signed, most of everything I do is with the project coordinator with the police department. Because at that time, I'm working with them, they go out and get the information that's needed, if they need to go to city council, they go to city council, it's kind of like an incident command. Over the years, in 2016, we decided to start mobile enforcement, where we had, we call it, we affectionately called it R2D2, because it was a Chevy Sonic, it was about this big, and you could put it just about anywhere. Some of the officers that, that we asked to drive it, they weren't too happy, because there wasn't a whole lot of room in there when you get a computer, you get a camera, and you get the equipment. Every week, no, every two weeks, we would put out notice on Facebook, city's website, and to the media, exactly where it was going to be. We didn't hide it, it said City of Muscatine on it, it was a blue Chevy Sonic, some people followed it and put pizza boxes on it, to cover the front windshield. Most of the time, it was left alone. We have, within the first two years, and we've maintained, they've maintained, I've been retired for three years now, 30% reduction in crashes, and maintained the reduction in speed at that entrance to the business district. The interesting thing is, is when we, when these DOT put out some regulation, they started a rulemaking process, which was eventually found unconstitutional by the Iowa Supreme Court, they said we had to shut down the cameras on the state highways, until we met certain things. And basically, the, the rules were set in place that you couldn't have photo enforcement. During that time, at that one intersection that we had a 50% reduction in citations, it went from 6,000 possible violations to 18,000. Because we left the data counters going on, on the cameras. The company that we contracted with allowed us to do that, and they gave us the data. As soon as people know that something isn't there, the behavior modification effect isn't there. It'd be just like saying, okay, we're not going to have a police department. The effect, the control of behavior modification of that goes away. Through the years, honestly, I had a love-hate relationship with photo enforcement, because it's a lot of work, it's a lot of responsibility, it's a lot of transparency, but I am 100% behind photo enforcement. I've seen it work. I know it works, and I'm a firm believer in using technology when you can, to enhance quality of life, and to make life easier. And when I retired, there was already recruiting problem. When I got hired in 1989, we had 400 people show up for the testing, for the testing I was at for the Muscatine Police Department. When I left, we had 10. So I don't think it's gotten any better lately with recruiting. So you have to look at this as a force multiplier, if you do this. Again, it's, it's your decision, I'm not here to sell you on anything. It's a force multiplier, plus, the police department has to decide where they can deploy people, where their officers are going to be, and if you can use technology to do some traffic enforcement, you can use technology for other things, it's a way to create resources for them.
So do you consistently see a reduction in accidents after cameras are put up? And how long does it take behavior to be modified, after you put up the cameras?
There will be, you'll start out here, and then you'll come to here, typically 30% to 50% reduction, and you're going to plateau.
In speeders, in violators?
Speeders, running red light, crashes. When you do data collection for the crashes, you have to look at, what approaches do you have the cameras on? So more or less, if you just have one door sound, you've got to look at the crashes and see where they actually occur, to see if they're actually at that intersection, but you will see a plateau. You're never going to have, unless you take away motor vehicles, you're never going to stop motor vehicle crashes. But what I always told people, and I firmly believe this, if I can keep a few people from having to go to the headache, of having to take their car to the auto shop, not having be in aches and pains for even for a non-reportable crash that doesn't involve injury, and having to go through the headaches with insurance, and to get that car fixed, it's worth, and doubly worth it, if I can keep someone from getting injured in a crash, whether it's pedestrian, or someone in a motor vehicle.
Are there any cities that have put them in and then took them out? Didn't want them, or there was a downside to it?
Not in Iowa. There's some that have added them. What eluded that? They added some additional places, and they may have moved a couple where they were finding that there just wasn't the need for them there anymore. So after a certain amount of time, they came to the other company I started with, and that was contractor in Muscatine, and they said, can we move these? Sure, you can do that, you can move them. There's construction costs, there's, there are certain things that, that come with that, but they can be moved. There's also, for speed enforcement, there's mobile enforcement, and there's handheld laser too.
Help me understand the data flow a little bit. So you got the device that captures, then where does the data go? Eventually, it's got to get to the Waverly Police Department, but where else could that, does that data flow to?
Can everybody hear me? Because I kind of move around when I talk, I just, if I need to stay right here, I'll anchor myself, I'm sorry, I just noticed how to keep doing that.
Well, we can hear you, but if you're not talking to the mic, the people at home might not be able to hear you.
All right, I'll stay here. When the camera captures an event, an event is the first part of the whole system. The camera, based on the programming of it and the threshold, it'll say, that vehicle is speeding over that speed limit, or it crossed the, the stop bar at a red light.
So a non-event is a non-speeder? It wouldn't capture that?
It wouldn't capture that. There's some system that you can get, like ours and others, that have archived video where it goes all the time, where a law enforcement agency can pull it up, let's say they have a crash, or let's say they have something that goes on, and they want to see if a vehicle went through there, they can use, they can have video that'll be captured all the time. An event would be a possible violation or citation. That then comes to the company, can you see the, is the photo clear? Is the license plate clear? Is everything working with the system? Then it moves to a violation stage, where the police department would look at it. The law enforcement officer then would look at it and say, doesn't meet the necessarily, necessary requirements? And I would say, my name is going on that citation. My name, my badge number, my signature are going to be on every citation that's mailed out that I approve. So is that a violation, is that violation clear enough to be a citation? They approve it, or they're rejected. If they approve it, then it goes to our mailing service, who then mails it out to the owner. In the state of Iowa, the typical timeline to pay or to contest is the first 30 days. Like credit card companies, we usually put a buffer on that too, because if someone waits till near the end to pay it or contest it, we don't want to mail them a second notice, we don't want to get things screwed up in the mail. So if they pay or contest in the first 30 days, they contest it, it goes to the administrative review process, or it goes straight to court, whichever that person decides, whatever is set up in your program. If they don't pay or contest, then a second notice goes out. In most states, they have a penalty or a late fee that goes with that failure to act. Iowa, they say you can't do that, which, that's the way the Supreme Court ruled, so that's what you have to go with, until there is any controlling legislation. The second notice goes out. If they ignore that, then you have to file, if the city wants to recoup any of that unpaid amount, you file what's called a municipal infraction. Municipal infraction is a city's way of basically filing a small claim against that person. Then that would go before a judge, you have your typical, it needs to be served either in person or by, gee, the certified or registered mail, the more expensive one. It's served on them, it goes through the EDMF system of the court, and that's the electronic filing system, and then the judge would make a determine whether the person is liable for that fine, and for that offense, or multiple offenses with that case, and the judge would make a ruling. Now, in the state of Iowa, these violations are not, are not provided to the state of Iowa, they don't appear on your driving records, and they don't get reported to your insurance. However, anybody that has had any interaction with Iowa courts online will know that as soon as there is a legal action in the Iowa courts, it stays in Iowa courts online. So if the city files that municipal infraction, it will be in Iowa courts online, I think, forever. The other thing is that if the person does not prevail in court, then there's court costs and filing fees that are added to the fine, just like it would be for any other civil offense. If the person does not pay that judgment that the judge has already, has issued that the person is liable for, then the city can go to collections, and the city can use the Iowa income offset program, if you want. There again, that is up to the city. In Muscatine, when, when we started noticing that, people went on Facebook and they were saying, you don't need to pay it. I had a friend that said, you don't need to pay it, they can't do anything to you. What we did, we started, the city, the city attorney is also the county attorney, because they contract with them for the prosecution part, said, okay, we're going to start filing X amount every month, because we kind of made a deal with the court, saying, we aren't going to overload you, because this is new to you, and we don't want to overload your staff. We started doing that. Soon the word got around that they couldn't just not pay it and ignore it, there was consequences for it. They still had their day in court. If a judge found them not liable for it, they didn't owe anything. If the judge found them liable, they were liable for that whole amount. So there's due process all along the way. People can take advantage of the administrative review, usually that part comes in where, oh, I had people come in, and they had medical reasons as to why they were speeding, they were going to the hospital because someone was there, they were going to the school because their daughter, son, or someone fell off the gym, or they had an injury. There's multiple reasons why people will speed, and I've always told the agency, when you're doing the administrative review, if you were told this on the street, would you still issue the person a traffic citation? Now, there were some outlandish excuses, but the programs worked, it's still there, it's still going strong. But that is, that's typically the process that it follows, from the event, from the camera captures it, the company reviews it, makes sure that everything is there, we forward the evidence package to the police department for a violation, for them to review, they approve it or reject it. If they approve it, it goes to the citation being mailed out. And then you start the, the 30-day process to pay or contest, followed by the 30-day, well, the second notice following that. I got long-winded, I'm sorry.
So you said, kind of at the beginning of this, this is a lot of work, time, and transparency. So it definitely sounds like a lot of work, especially if somebody wants to contest one of these things. So, you know, I know Dr. Rothie asked about how much time does this take for a police officer to review some of these things, but then you have to go into detail about all of this other stuff, and so that makes me go bash, this is really going to, you know, put a load on things, or maybe, and you also mentioned, hey, it kind of takes the, you didn't say it, but it kind of takes a person, the face-to-face contact away from someone who's speeding, and why they might be speeding, which I don't think anybody should be speeding, even if there's emergency, it just increases that, that safety issue. But, you know, but it does take away down some of that face-to-face time that police officers do, and I understand enforcement, or, you know, compliance. And I, and I understand enforcement or, you know, compliance, if you see a sign that says, hey, we're going to take a picture of you and send you us a bill in the mail if you're speeding. So I guess I have some concerns about a lot of stuff that you just went through with work time and transparency, and I agree with the transparency, but, but I appreciate all that information.
Can I expand on what you're bringing up?
Yeah.
Number one, the love-hate relationship is, I love the program, I love the effects of it, I don't like the politics of it, I don't like having to go, I didn't like having to go to the state when the legislative session was going on and talk to them about it. The media was fine, I had a lot of media inquiries, and the biggest part I didn't like about it was the politics. And I've never, never liked that part. Now, the time, energy that it takes, that I was talking about, that's getting the program going. When the program is up and running, the time it takes to review violations and to make sure the program's running straight in the way it's supposed to, that doesn't take that long. It really doesn't. The time it takes is get the ordinance going. Where are these going to be put in? How are you going to balance, where do you want them, how's it going to be balanced? And then getting everything going, there's a lot of little details, and that is part of my job to help the agency and the city work through those and make those, make those decisions, bring them up and say, what do you want to do with this? That's where the time, energy, the transparency, that's important to the whole thing. And that is through annual, your city annual report. In Muscatine, we did an annual report every year. We included it with the police department annual report, it went into the city annual report. I have a feeling they're probably doing an annual report anyways, so it'd just be another section.
So if it's transparent, what's the main political argument against it?
The main political argument, without naming names, there were one or two senators that would always put a ban bill, and they wanted to ban them. In the same week, they would want to raise the speed limit on the interstate up to 80. There are people, people don't like negative consequences. They don't like receiving those in the mail, they don't like getting a traffic ticket. There's people that don't like a lot of different things. There's photo enforcement people don't like, people don't like law enforcement, people don't like a lot of, a lot of things. I'll just leave it at that. So it never fails, even with this last time, there was a ban bill that came out first. And when you go to talk to people on, at the legislature, they accuse you of lying. You give them the statistics. And I, one of the senators said, you're lying. He said, these are just statistics, these are numbers, these are, this is the data, you do with it what you want. That, that, honestly, that got really frustrating.
So the arguments weren't necessarily based on logic?
So, I didn't hear it.
The arguments weren't necessarily based on logic, is what you're saying? Weren't based on?
They were based on what people, what their belief or what was going on in their head. I'm not going to say it wasn't reality or it wasn't logic. It was based on someone's personal belief.
I'm going to kind of jump in on part of that, because I think one of the questions that's going to jump out to us is, is it a revenue stream? Is this not, we can talk about safety, but how many people are going to look at it and say, it's not about safety, it's about generating revenue? Are you making money off of us, even though they're violating? You know, they're, they're not going to argue that I'm not speeding, they're going to say, you're just trying to make money off of me. That's what we hear already when people get pulled over in town, or they say, you know, the cops are out looking out for the, the warbird kids with the out-of-state plates and, you know, that's all they're trying to pull over, or whatever. And so I guess from my, one of my big concerns on this is, and you used the term return on investment, it's, okay, this is a private company, how much are we paying them? How much does the cost of setup, first of all? I mean, ordinance and stuff, that's staff time and working through that. But how much does the installation and setup of, of the equipment cost? How much revenue does the company take versus does the city get? Is there an ongoing fee if, is there a minimum fee if we don't, you know, we get the results that we want, that enforcement, you know, behavior modifies and suddenly now the company's going, well, we expect this much money from you? Is that part of it? I don't know. And so, I'll get to the money question now.
So all good questions. And so let me just do this, let me go back to the beginning of, kind of like the three steps. And so tonight was again, kind of an introduction, a reintroduction of ATEs, how they can be effective and if there's need within Waverly. And kind of what I wanted to get out of tonight is counsel's feeling if there would be a need, and if there's a need that there is some interest in researching that any further. The second step would be to bring an ordinance forward, as Phil talked about. And then we could work through what an ordinance would look like. And a lot of that would kind of, to Matt's question of, what's that process look like? And I agree, I agree with everything, and we give them as much due process as possible. And to Heather's point, the follow-up, you know, the work, but a lot of that has to do with every, any traffic stuff you have, somebody can test any violation. So those things would, some of those things would be there anyway. And then the third step is choosing the company. And then of that comp, and once that choice is made, then there would be a contract that we work with Bill and the company on, and some of the questions that you have would be listed within that, and we would determine if, you know, if it's a good contract or not. And so, and I only say it not because I don't want to answer your question, but I, I think that may be a little bit down the road is, because there is a lot to this, and I try to break it down into, you know, manageable pieces, if you will.
I think every city has it differently, whether it's percentage, whether it's fee, whether it's not. All these cities probably have all different contracts, similar in nature and purpose, but the smaller pieces and parts in there is all negotiated, it's all looked at, it's all depending on what they need, how many, et cetera. So it's a hard question to ask for what we want specifically for us, depending on how far we go.
Wasn't there something in one of the Senator House bills that was limiting the percent of takes on cameras? I didn't follow that enough to know if that maybe?
And they tried to do that, they tried to, it had to be an American-based and it had to be a state-based company. That, I mean, there was, there was a lot of different things that they threw out. I can tell you that there's escape clauses there that if, I know that there's, if legislation changes, you know, the city of Waverly wouldn't be, I mean, those things, again, is like step three, deciding on the company and that, what that contract would look like, so.
So if our goal is to create a safer city with fewer accidents, fewer injuries, and you're our public safety advisor, what do you think? Do you think there's a need, looking at this data?
I would say there's a need. Again, I was surprised with a lot of the, a lot of the data that came up. I am a reluctant believer. I don't, I mean, I, you know, your first, I'm just being honest, I just, I think it's one of those things that when you first see and you first hear about, your knee-jerk reaction is, no, I don't know if that, that's a good idea, until you start really looking and going through the information. And if it is a concern to us, what we're seeing, then what's the alternative? And, and I think that's where I get stuck a little bit of, then if not this, what are some other answers? If we've gone through all the engineering, if we've done all the signage properly, if we hit these other countermeasures, if we're doing all those things, which will be required to show that we have, then what other option is there? Or what can we add? Or are we satisfied with where we're at? Some people might be, no, you know, what we're seeing is, is what we, is okay, it's the norm is. So, let me do this, let me close with this and we'll see if there's any other questions. It'll be my escape clause. So traffic enforcement is almost solely the responsibility of law enforcement. Unfortunately, when motorists run a red light, don't stop for a pedestrian or is speeding, it goes unenforced unless a police officer is on-site to witness the infraction. From an enforcement standpoint, it is easy to see that some violations are not being addressed, that some are, but not many. Automated traffic enforcement is one safety countermeasure that can be used to enhance roadway safety for everyone. So, that's all I got.
I have one, I guess, point of clarification. I would anticipate that one of the responses we might have from the public is a sense of alarm over Big Brother. So can you just clarify for us that, if I understood correctly, the only thing that would trigger like a recording would be if there's an infraction? It's not, you're not going to be recognizing my face every time I go through an intersection? Or recording my movements if I'm not breaking the law? Is that correct?
It has the capability of doing that, it would determine what the parameters of how we would want to set it up. And so this is going down the weeds a little bit. For example, where this could be a useful tool. So yes, you could have it as, like our body worn cameras and our cameras in our SWAT cars have called us pre-event. And so it's always recording, it's always there. And if an officer sees something, they can hit record and it'll, it'll go back. And so is that, that always there is, I mean, and that's kind of what these cameras do, they're always recording. So at some point, you would be able to go back and check, yes, for items that would not be a violation at that time. But where that could be an advantage is, last year, we had a burglary to a house on First Street during Oktoberfest weekend, nonetheless, and stole $40,000 worth of jewelry from their house. St. Paul's got a partial plate off of one of their cameras. And we could tell, we did an offline search of the DOT, and we found every vehicle description that matched that, and we had an officer spend four months driving around the state of Iowa, clearing vehicles off of that description, I thought what we saw on camera from St. Paul's. And so the idea that there's always, you know, that these cameras are, there's cameras everywhere, right, recording us? Most of our suspicious activity are solved with people's doorbells, you know? They're, it's, things are being recorded. Anyway, if we would have had this available, we would have been able to look at the license plates associated with those vehicles on that offline search and determine if that plate was in Waverly or not during that time, if they would have passed one of the cameras. So the answer is yes, but it's, it's how the parameters set and how much you want, information you want to keep. And that would, that would be, but there's, are some advantages to doing that.
Well, there was an example in the news today at UNC when they were trying to find a shooter, and they said they had a vehicle description but didn't know where he was. Conceivably, that type of a situation could be helped by this, is that what you're saying?
Conceivably, yes.
We could have seen that with the vehicle on the side in town possibly too, a couple years ago, Mr. Smalls. Brings closer to the event, closure to the family, solves the issue.
People with those kind of concerns though, also Julie, they probably need to throw this in the lake, I would say, or river, because it's tracking you more than anything else we could possibly get our hands on. And that's the stuff that makes me laugh, is we think that, oh my God, that camera, what's in your pocket 24/7? What are you thinking, carrying around? It's basically a chip tracking you everywhere. If you don't think it is, worried about Big Brother, throw that in the pond, because that's where we are, society today. I mean, don't kid yourself thinking that that's the real bad thing, it's a camera that saw you speeding. It's what's in your pocket, and every one of your kids is.
But to that point, I mean, Big Brother is a concern. I mean, you, everyone I think is familiar with smart growth and smart cities and the 15-minute city. You know, smart growth is an acronym for surveillance, monitoring, analysis, let's see if I remember, research and technology. And the issue here is that entire movement has been hijacked by a bunch of extremely bad international players. So we have this, though this is, I think, fine and well, it's, we're introducing something I, in my opinion in the community, that we shouldn't be introducing because of, because of what's going on internationally. And once that clears, I think, you know, something we can take a look at again, but I would.
You think people track in Chester, Iowa for information?
Well, you know, you have, you have the Department of Transportation in the United States has said he wants a national network of cameras. Why? You know, those are questions that I think are very important for us to ask, and I honestly think these play fast and loose with due process. I mean, you can't, trying to ticket a vehicle, it's a person, you gotta ticket at the vehicle. But, you know, we've, we've worked around that. And, and I also think I gather, you know, I think if the public is watching this meeting, the perception is that crashes are going to, like greatly reduce. But I'm looking at Fourth and 10th, like if you put red lights there, you know, yeah, we had 642 crashes citywide, but there's only five in that intersection that I can count, and there might be six or seven, because those dots kind of layer up on there. Well, if, if a red light camera reduces five or six over five or six, five years, I think is what you pulled, that's not much of a reduction.
But if people are speeding less? If it's your family that's in the crash, it's a reduction.
Yeah, but you put a red light camera, everyone's braking, so you're flipping over to rear end crashes. So it's, you're just flipping crashes. You know, this entire city of Los Angeles pulled their red lights based on, on that. They had an entire program across the entire city, and they pulled all of them because they, you know, the crashes were up. I can't make that same argument for speeding cameras, I think we do have an issue coming into town, but it needs to be addressed somehow.
If you're looking for feedback, and I, I don't expect a response from this, matter of fact, I don't want a response, or, or any kind of counter about this, but I have some real concerns, particularly with the speed cameras. I can see where they would be useful, particularly on Fourth Street. And without getting into a whole lot of detail, one of my major concerns is an issue of fairness. I think that if speed cameras are going to be used, there has to be an incredible amount of transparency. Basically, a great big sign that says, there is a speed camera right here, if you speed through this area, you will receive a ticket. I mean, not just a, a sign at the edge of town that says, speed is, is photo enforced, or a spot on the website that says, that somebody looks up on our city website that sees where those are. One of the biggest issues that I have seen from the articles that I've read, and my own personal experience driving through Cedar Rapids, is that all the local people very quickly know where the speed cameras are. They will slow down to the speed camera and then speed up. So after a while, you're basically catching visitors. And is that the kind of city that we want to have, the, the, the kind of reputation we want to have, that we are ticketing visitors through town? Now, if people are speeding, yes, absolutely. But I want to make sure that the purpose of the speed camera is to reduce the speed on the road and not to issue tickets. And the best way that you can make sure that people are going to obey the speed limit is that they absolutely know 100% that if they're speeding on this spot, they're going to get a ticket. And, and I'm not sure how to do that, there might be some ways that you can do that. We certainly don't have the issues we have in Cedar Rapids. And I know when the speed cameras first came through in Cedar Rapids, I was driving through, you know, 60 mile an hour zone, I mean, going 61 or 62, and people were flying by me going, you know, 70, 75. And then all of a sudden, the traffic just came to a, almost a screeching halt, and everybody was going 60. And I thought, well, this is weird. And then about a quarter mile later on, everybody's going 70, 75 again. Well, it was, it was where the camera was. And after a week or two, everybody in Lynn County knew where the cameras were, and by God, they were going to, you know, slow down where the camera was and then speed up again. Now, I'm not sure how effective that is, and I guess I would want to have some real discussion. And I guess I would want to have some real discussion on, to make sure that if we had speed cameras, that they were going to be number one, fair, and number two, probably number one, that they were going to accomplish what we wanted them to accomplish, and number two, that they were going to be fair. And those would be my major concerns. Stoplight cameras, I don't have quite as much of an issue with, because obviously, if there's a stoplight, a red light, everybody should be stopping for it. But I'm not sure that the stoplight cameras are really going to have that big an effect. I think there are some things we can do, particularly with the Bremer Avenue, Fourth Street corner over there. I mean, if the four streets coming in, if you're heading south, the speed limit is 25. If you're heading west, the speed limit is 25. If you're heading north, the speed limit is 30. If you're heading east, the speed limit is essentially 35. Maybe we should take a look at having all of those roads have the same speed limit on them when they're approaching that corner, you know, 25 miles an hour, or at least a block away from where the intersection is. I think that might help a little bit. Maybe not, I don't know, but it's something we can try without putting in cameras. So I'm not absolutely opposed to having either stoplight cameras or, or speed cameras, but I would have to be really convinced that that was something that we needed and it was going to be effective.
I'm going to jump in here. You didn't want a response, I'm not going to give you one.
Okay.
I'm going to step away, because I think this is where the feedback you're looking for, whether or not we want to bring it back. So.
Well, thank you for your, for the information. I mean, I'm just going to respond. I don't understand, I mean, I'm puzzled by why we wouldn't want to at least explore something that potentially adds to the safety in the city. I think that if you drive through Cedar Rapids, my car now alerts me where the camera is. And the sign is right there. Then there's a camera. It's posted. I've said, like, I'm really in tune with this now. I did not see people revving up to 75 in between the cameras. Maybe I was there on a calm day. I don't know. But I think, you know, he explained the due process. We're trying to be transparent. We have other ways to make money, I suppose, if we wanted to increase people's taxes. I think the only people who have to worry about this are the people who speed. And it bothers me that somebody's driving 72 miles an hour within city limits, when that's very dangerous, even if it's at 3:00 in the morning. I think that, that it's hard to, a camera and data and something that captures 10 miles over the speed limit is much more objective than an officer, right, who could let you off with a warning. Sometimes I don't, I'm not sure how they decide who gets a warning and who gets arrested. But some cities aren't even stopping traffic violations anymore because it leads to high-speed chases, it's led to police shootings, et cetera. And so some departments, according to what I hear on the news, if you trust the news, is that they're not doing that in some cities, because it can be potentially dangerous. So I think if our chief, who's hesitant about this, sees this as potentially something that could improve public safety, I think we should explore it. But I'm not a speeder. And so I'm not too worried that I'm going to get caught, although perhaps I have sped on my way away from the hospital, not toward the hospital. But, but, you know, I think we should explore it. And, and there's multiple steps in the process of exploration, that we can tweak the system, that we can ask the tough questions, that we can find out how much it costs, how much officer, man or woman, power is it going to take. But, but we have a lot of speeding. I'm curious if you would have put monitors on the stop signs, the four-way stop sign by Redeemer, which now has flashing lights, because people wouldn't stop there, or the one where there's a new pedestrian crossing by the, by the, near Dairy Queen there, where people roll through that continuously. So I think we have a problem. And if we can shape people's behavior in a way that's transparent and safe, I think we should explore it.
And I'm pretty sure there are people around who would love to see a speed camera on Cedar Lane, too.
I wondered about that. I would agree with everything that you've just said. I think transparency is critical, and that's why I brought up the question about people worrying about Big Brother, because that's going to be a question that'll come to us. And I think we need to be honest and open about it. But it's a safety issue. And, and none of us like to get picked up for speeding. We all feel irritated if, well, I've never really experienced this, but I imagine that I would feel irritated, you know, if I'm not paying attention going down Cedar Lane and I get pulled over. But if that's the situation, then I was creating a danger. And I need to obey the laws. And I think that by using technology, it is a more objective way of enforcement. And if putting a sign up that says you are now being recorded, don't speed, is what it takes to make people not speed, then that's effective. And I don't feel like I personally have enough facts yet to make a decision, should we do this or should we not? And obviously, the cost is a big consideration, but I think it's something we need to explore.
So I'll solicit the information for the, just going around, would you like to explore this further?
Yes.
Yes.
Got a lot of concerns that have to be addressed, but we can explore.
Same with me. We've got a lot of concerns that I need to have addressed, but I have no problem exploring.
Yes. I have a lot of concerns with, as well, and countermeasures that I'd want to try before exploring.
I'll get yours to Dr.
Say yes.
All right.
Thank you, Jill.
Good direction we've got. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir, Sergeant, for joining us. Thank you, Chief, for salving your information. Thank you, Carl, for getting all that written out. Mr. Browner for staff updates.
Just a brief one, sir.
Here's a reminder with a double out on Tuesday, September 5th, for garbage and recycling.
Recycled truck back in service?
Hopefully.
Okay, good deal. Stop, don't get messed up, right? That's all we have tonight, sir. All right. City Council members, it's Myers.
I had the opportunity last Tuesday evening to attend the public meeting that was put on by Bremer County Emergency Management. With regard to the communication system within our community, Chief, I need your assistance. Is it called ITSS?
ITSS.
It's.
Yes, the state, the state system.
So, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. So with that going to great length here, I came at this issue with a couple of decades spent in my former life, working with EMS systems. And I thought I was pretty well versed in EMS and emergency communications. And what I learned is that we are way, way behind the times in Bremer County. And I was a little shocked to learn that if we have multiple agencies responding to basically anything in the community, they pretty much can't talk to each other. And we need to upgrade the communication systems. It's going to cost a little over $5 million to do that. And it's up to the county board of supervisors who will be voting at the end of September. Is that right?
Yes, September 1st or October. I think they're moving to the first, the end of September.
And they'll be voting whether to bond funding to upgrade this communication system. And the stories that they were telling were frankly shocking to me, even having come from spending many years in, in the emergency services. So I encourage anybody to educate yourself about the issue, if you feel so inclined, and please reach out to the supervisors and let them know if you support that they need to vote for this, so that we can join the 21st century. And, I mean, I just kept thinking about all the scenarios that can and do happen, where we have multiple agencies needing to talk to each other, and they can't do it. So.
Where's the best place?
There are four more meetings between now and, let's see, tomorrow evening in Tripola, Thursday in Reedlin, and then a couple next week in Frederica and Plainfield, if anybody's interested. It's on the Bremer County Emergency Management.
Meeting on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 6:30. What community it is, where they're at, you have to go to the page, but.
Yep. So is there a place to learn more about it, like a website that explains the issue?
Not really.
Call KIP.
Mr. Bergen?
Well, first I want to wish everyone a happy National Bowtie Day. I also wanted to let people know about an upcoming event, the Iowa Geocachers Organization, their annual Hike and Seek event, is going to be on Saturday, September 16th. So there will be 200 new geocaches put out around Bremer County, and there will be a number of geocachers who come out for this wonderful, family-friendly event. But I also want people to know about, if you're interested in learning more about geocaching, the week before that, on September 9th, is a geocaching 101 event at the library from 11 to 12. So if anyone is intrigued and wants to know about geocaching before the big event comes to town, they can come and attend that. So.
If you need directions, see Brian.
Well, it's at the library. So I hope people know where that is. And then finally, anyone who'd like to discuss city politics, please join me for a beer at the Wooden Foot after, no, the meeting.
Thank you.
Senator, Franco? Yes, since our topic tonight was kind of road safety, I think this is probably germane. You remember, we put some money in our 2023-2024 budget for pedestrian activated traffic lights on the parkway. And I would just want to make sure that that project was moving forward, so those lights are ready to go. As I understand it, the DOT is considering having 10th Avenue as a parkway as the official detour for Highway 3 when our bridge is out. That's going to mean there's going to be a tremendous amount of additional traffic on the parkway and on 10th Avenue. And I think it would be extremely appropriate to have those stoplights up and running before the bridge was taken out next fall. So I'm not sure where we're at on that. And I'm not really pushing to, to make sure that gets done right away. But I think it would be a very good idea for us to have that as a goal, to have those lights up and running by that time. That's what I got.
Thanks, sir. Brown?
Nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doctor?
Thank you for the opportunity to be served as your guest. Thank you for the invitation. Thank you all for your support of our students as they come back to campus. And we enjoy another year. We're looking forward to a very large first-year class, so really excited about the increase in numbers at Warburg College. On a personal note, thank you for having such a beautiful, wonderful dog park. I have to tell you, it's the nicest dog park. I've lived in big cities and cities all over the Midwest and in the South, and it is the nicest dog park I've ever been to. And it's a wonderful community resource and a great place to meet people. So just wanted to just say from a personal note that I just love that dog park. So thank you to everybody who helps to support it.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to have you here. So. Mr. Henges?
Yes, just kind of a reminder to council members, but Wednesday night, 6?
5:30.
5:30, 7:00. Coleman Park is the welcome for the Warburg International Students. And it's always been, third or fourth year we've done this, maybe?
Third.
So it's, it's been a nice gathering to kind of welcome them into the community. And there's some community businesses that have contributed to some things, typically for kind of as a welcome, but also from the council, the kind of from the city standpoint to welcome them in as well. I was going to comment on.
And that's at 6?
That's 5:30 to, 5:30 to 7:30. Okay. I'm blanking on the time option, 6. My wife tells me when I'm supposed to be there. So, no, she's on the Equity Commission that does. I was going to check with Brian on that September 9th thing, is that going to be done before the Iowa State game and make sure people.
It may be done before kickoff. It's supposed to be done by noon, but.
Not that that's important, because this week is the U and I Iowa State game. And with my son now going to Iowa State, go U and I.
Well, I have to say, we deliberately scheduled the Hike and Seek not to be the same weekend as the games. So.
All right. I have three things this evening. Number one, I had a community member that communicated with me in regards to the pool, and specifically its condition. And they summarized the observations that we've made here over the last several years, and I think beyond that, that have definitely been discussed. And this individual closed with a statement that they are excited to see this on the council's to-do list and part of the comprehensive plan. And just their forward observations. And they made a request to bring this forward publicly, that the condition that Garrett shared with us about pumps and different things and the water loss and all that, doesn't only go noticed by city staff, but it does go by the public. So they're eager to see something happening with that in the future. I'll hit this one next. Tomorrow is the opening of nomination petitions for city council members, mayors, what else, city, or school district, school board members, some of them, and the hospital board as well. And with that, some will cringe with this and some will mightily cheer, I will not be seeking reelection for mayor for next term. My family, with three children, one a junior this year, and one graduating in 2023, along with my wife, are demanding my attention. So along with my other role in the county of serving the entire county as a whole, it's definitely been an honor to serve, but I just wanted to bring that out there. I'll have more information on our December 18th meeting with closing statement, per se. So. The other thing that I've had some questions, and it's about that time to make this announcement as well. On a brighter note, Halloween will be trick-or-treat night, October 31st, Chief, 5:00 to 7:30. What are you going to dress up as?
Fireman.
Fireman. I love it. So the cat is out of the bag. The black cat is out of the bag. October 31st, my standing tradition through my tenure has been, if we can avoid having it on a school night on a Sunday night, we try to have it on Saturday, the Saturday before. We try to avoid Wednesday nights, because some of our church organizations have functions those nights as well. So we try, I have tried to avoid that. I have respect for those events going on. So again, the 31st, 5:00 to 7:30. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Second. Motion by Kangas, second by Schneider. All in favor say aye. All right. Pose the same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.